...provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of the public being was provided in the notice of January 17th. Post-adjunctives at the board office, for the education offices mailed to the Nutley Center, the Starle Edge of the New Jersey Herald and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised to the Nutley Center on January 17th, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all your presence and recognition of all of Nutley's proceedings, please request that all cell phones and pages be turned off for silence for the duration of this meeting. At this time we'll have the flags loop. Allow the moment of silence for our school board employee Tiffany Wall that passed away unfortunately. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its solid culture stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mrs. Jane Chen Martin?
Here.
Ms. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Ms. Coker?
Here.
Dr. Dean?
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scholawa?
Mrs. Spazada?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
At this time we'll have the performance.
There is no.
Mr. Lazard?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. As always, a break deal has happened even in the short two weeks since the last meeting. First off, I want to thank everyone, especially the teachers and administrators in elementary buildings for their efforts to read across America. We've had local townspeople, commissioners, board members, administrators on all levels, parents in the buildings all weekend, certainly on Friday to celebrate reading and literacy. It was a great event, and I'm sure the kids bested it, and everyone seemed to have a great time. Updating on the math pilot, just following up again, the piloting material begins this week. Professional development continues. There's one specific session to happen this week, and the pilots continue all the way through the end of May. Professional development will be ongoing of the different series that are being piloted. Near the end of May, Ms. Klein will bring the chat group back together and make the final decision, make sure we can order materials, and most importantly, begin professional development to continue through the summer for our teachers so that they're walking as prepared as possible in September. On the other side, nine of the darks, the first of four full-day training to begin to the model. All of our teachers who are involved in Tier One will be involved in each day of training. It includes model lessons as well as conferences with our consultant. The teachers have already begun to experiment with different pieces of the workshop model. We're going to be learning the necessary materials to outfit the classrooms to ensure that at the beginning of September, all teachers can attract leverage workshop. As of right now, it's difficult because of the shortage of resources in the classroom, but thanks to the board and the new budget, we'll be able to retain that for purchases. Kindergarten registration was last week. Thank you to Ms. Valani, Mr. Beamermeister, and Mr. Levine, and of course, Mr. Ferrer and his crew. There were 176 students so far registered. We have the break down chart with the board already, based on schools. It doesn't include the affidavit students and the 38 students who are pre-registered. Case in point, based on last year's numbers, we already have things we can talk about. Ms. Klein will be having conversations with our elementary principals, and as numbers continue to stay risen, if you will, we're looking at similar issues to right now to what we had last year. Numbers obviously change all the way through the summer, but working with our principals to do our best to make sure we're fully prepared and we can maintain things like class size and instructional support. Hespa testing, general hespa testing, as long as our sophomores and freshmen taking our in-house common pre-hespa, of course, last week. Makeups are this week. Everything has been put in. We're using our student performance database, Performance Matters, to leverage the pre-tests so we can start looking at that data ahead of time. I've been spending the majority of my time, past couple weeks and all of March, with at least school time, with teachers this month, with the evaluations, non-tenure conversations with volunteer staff. I know Ms. Valani, as well as all of our principals are doing the same, as we finalize non-tenure staff evaluation and recommendations. We're planning for our March meetings, which we've had announced to live in here every year, at the end of March, the March meeting leveraged information from the budget, which has now been locked, as well as registration information, growth projections, and the student performance that we have on internal assessments, to make determinations both on non-tenure staff, but then on staffing as a whole. As always, our guiding question is what is absolutely best for students across the district A-12, and how do we leverage all of our resources to benefit as many students as possible? DE4 and J, the Department of Education released proposed legislation. We're currently reviewing the 104-page document. It's going to be sent to members of the District Evaluation Advisory Committee, or DDAC. DDAC will evaluate our progress based on those recommendations, and will make a public presentation. The DDAC, just as a review, is composed of two teachers from each grade span, K-6, 7, and 9, 12, building, district, and central office administrators, parent, members of both impacted associations, principals, the administrators, and the teachers, as well as a member of Board of Education. Ms. Flynn is the board representative for the committee, and again, the communal prepare public presentation, which will be presented at an upcoming board meeting. A little over a week ago, I met with Barbara Rilson, who's the Assistant Commissioner for Student Performance. She was outlining and answering questions about the changes to state testing, including PAR, as it stays in New Jersey, what it means for curriculum instruction for graduation from high school, as well as teacher evaluation. We also talked through how it's going to impact the new school report card. School report card being one of those consistent items that the public can use to assess school district to school district. It's taken on a new look this year. One of the biggest changes, other than calculating graduation rate differently, which we have previously discussed, and sharing new testing data as it becomes available, is that the new report cards are taking into consideration national clearance house data. National clearance house data is the data that we've been looking at in district now since I've been here. It gives us information on how our students do in higher education after they leave us. How many graduate within four years, within five years, as well as how many leave the nation when they get to college. And we're using that data because, again, we're trying to prepare kids for a future of which college is certainly one of the options. How are our students far compared to other students from schools across the country? So this is work that we continue. The state report card is going to bring that data to the forefront for the public, which is as we, at least in district, have been looking at for two years. Special services, the posting for the interim position closed on Friday. We received 19 applications. All applicants were contacted to confirm their seat at the application. Nine have been phone screened by me. We selected four, possibly five, and scheduled for face-to-face interviews for this week. Our goal is to make a recommendation on the March 25th agenda, so that we have someone in place prior to Mr. Williams' departure, which is the last day of March. Mr. Ackerman working with Ms. Valani, met with the K-6, our teachers this past Friday, discussing what we've been talking about. Based on feedback from staff and the information we've been getting from principals and the rest, we're modifying how we provide art for next year. Same number of teachers, but our goal is to keep teachers connected with specific schools as much as possible, based on what the numbers of students they take possible. The counseling and enrichment pieces of our current cycle will continue, but they're going to follow separate schedules, and those will be determined as we continue to review those individual programs. Instruction rounds. Last Thursday, members of Radcliffe School and visiting districts participated in round visits here with Mr. Corbin and his team. I thought it was a terrific day. We got some great feedback. We had surveys that follow each of these, so that our staff can provide feedback on what was valuable, what is not valuable, what can be improved. The overwhelming piece of data is that one of the questions asked is they feel other staff members should be involved in rounds, and at this point through four schools, we're 100% saying more staff members need to be involved in the process. So that was a positive piece of feedback. Next week, Lincoln School and Washington School will be hosting visits, and I met with Mr. Corbin today, and I'm meeting with Mr. Williams tomorrow to follow up on what's called the next level of work. Once the rounds visit happens at their building, there's a whole plan to ask them out as far as improvement will be felt. So we have to report out on that. Congratulations to all of our students across the district who participated in lawfare this year, certainly to Radcliffe and to Rintard teams who placed third and first respectively. Great show. The academic booster club, just because before our next meeting, their science fair will take place Saturday, the 23rd, which is prior to our next meeting. I look forward to being there and seeing where our students produce. It's going to be another exciting day. Mr. Kelly, thank you for updating me, but Drive or Ride Safe. We're one of 55 schools in New Jersey producing a media campaign under Mr. Kelly's direction. The purpose of the campaign is to discourage distracted driving. Students are working with local business leaders and stakeholders, trying to get as much participation on March 29th, Drive Safe and Building Day. Tomorrow, kicking off our effort, we're holding a press conference in conjunction with the mayor and some of the commissioners, as well as local press, so that they're aware of what we're doing, and our kids take in center states. Thanks to Mr. Kelly, and I'm looking forward to seeing what our kids can do. That being specific, I'm waiting for Mr. Mr. Power to give me the full detail, but this past week was filled with highlights from our athletic teams, girls' basketball, hockey, as well as our wrestling tournament that took place over the weekend. Looking forward to getting some of those on the website. Just finally, on Thursday, I was able to attend a high school's presentation of Little Shop of Hearts. Highly recommended through Twitter to anyone who could possibly go, but a lot of people retweeting and favoring my tweets, so hopefully everyone got to go and see the show. It was a rousing success in my mind, having been a director of high school shows. Thoroughly impressed once again. I definitely wanted to congratulate everyone involved, and certainly Ms. Monti. This was her direct royal debut, so congratulations to her. I don't think we missed a beat, and just once again, proving our student shine and everything, so.
Thank you. Before we go further, we'll back up to Karen. Any board secretary, work with each other.
Just to provide a little update, the budget was submitted to the Executive County Superintendent's Office last Tuesday. They are currently reviewing it. I have not received any feedback as yet, but this evening, the board is going to be amending the tentative budget figures that were adopted at the last meeting, since we received the final state aid numbers. So the resolution this evening includes all of the state aid that we received, along with the additional dollars. Nutley and about 43 other schools throughout the state receive that dollar increase. We also are adjusting the special revenue fund, as well as the debt service tax level. That figure was reduced due to an increase in debt service aid that we received, as well as the savings from when we refinanced all of the bonds.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from Joseph Cavella, from the...
Twice a year, as for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, we have to provide, Mr. Lazovic and I, some information regarding our HIP report to the Board of Education, and I'll be here, I believe, in October, and I'm back now in March. Just so we can get started, the state of New Jersey recognizes September to December as one period, and then from January to June as another period. As a district, there were 62 number of HIP cases reported. That means it was reported, doesn't mean that it was considered HIV, or it was confirmed HIV. 62 investigations were conducted, and that is the breakup by school, and to the left we have the percentages. At the elementary level, we have 17 cases were investigated at Lincoln, seven at Radcliffe, as you can see, four at Spring Garden, three at Washington, five at Yantico, and I know everyone's probably looking at Lincoln right now and saying, 17 cases, wow. However, we just need to recognize that each school, different population, there are different patterns, but the most important thing that I, we need to look at here is not the column to the left of each school, but to the right, where it talks about the confirmed cases. Where Lincoln, even though we had 17 cases were investigated, two were considered confirmed HIV, two at Radcliffe, one at Spring Garden, zero at Washington, one at Yantico. Overall, I believe it was 17, 21, 28, 31, 36 cases that we did investigate, and we have six cases that were confirmed HIP. Does that mean we are catching all, not catching, but addressing all the HIV? In a perfect world, I would say yes. However, some cases of HIV, students do not report, teachers do not witness it, sometimes parents do not report it as well. So we do our best in dealing with every case that is brought to our attention. At the elementary level, regarding the six cases of HIV, the state of New Jersey has recognized protected characteristics, and this is how students were targeted based upon those six cases. Coincidentally, there were six characteristics here, however, you're seeing at the middle school and the high school, sometimes the characteristics, there are more characteristics than actual HIP cases, because in one HIP case, a student can be bullied based upon two or three different characteristics. Secondary level, the high school, we had 22 cases that were investigated, nine confirmed HIBs, and at the middle school, we have four cases that were investigated, and one case that was considered HIV. One of the things that we've recognized as well, in, I believe, over the summer, the state of New Jersey has recognized that there was a 400% increase in the number of cases that were reported by districts in the state of New Jersey. One of the things that, I guess the concern was, and I attended in September 2011, when I attended the first training that was issued by the state, when we're talking about cases that had to be investigated, you could see in many superintendents, many principals, everyone was concerned, is every single case, someone calls someone stupid, is that going to be considered HIV? And I guess what I'm hearing through other anti-bullying coordinators is that there was a, they were over-reporting, and I think one of the things that we're seeing now is that the cases are starting to drop that we're investigating, and one of the things that we are recognizing is that we're doing a better job of addressing, before it even goes to HIV, we're recognizing that this was a conflict, or this is a student who stuck his foot in his mouth. It wasn't, was not his intentions to hurt the student, however, it was perceived that, it was perceived that. We have to take into consideration the student's age, developmental level, maturity, where we're addressing all these different cases of HIV that were investigated. At the high... Trying to go back to previous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lazovic. Thank you. So at the secondary level, we have 10 cases that were confirmed HIV, and as you can see, we have 13 protected characteristics. So in one case, it could be multiple number of characteristics that a student was being bullied, or harassed, or intimidated. Once again, if you could see where it says five cases were confirmed, but they were not motivated by a protected characteristic, not all bullying is based upon a protected characteristic. Some cases, someone's being bullied or intimidated because this young lady is now dating this other girl's ex-boyfriend. So they have, they're not getting along, the student is very upset with the other young lady. It could be about someone's height, their weight. Students don't need, unfortunately, students don't sometimes always utilize a characteristic to harass, intimidate, or bully someone. What we're doing as a district, just to reinforce, when I was in here in October, new staff training. From January to March 1st, I conducted 11 HIV trainings for staff new to the district, and that is considered teaching, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, aides, PT, OT, members of the Nutley Family Service Bureau who conduct groups in our school, they are contracted service providers, anyone whom you deem as being having significant contact with students. At the individual level, we try to be very creative with students, not just about giving someone a discipline, because I don't believe that is going to resolve the case. Some cases, yes, but some cases, we also work on maybe an apology letter, or conducting it, or doing an essay, or doing an assignment on researching something that's relevant to the case. Sometimes our students are doing poster, posters. We've actually incorporated the assistance of affirmative action officers in the district when it pertains to a protected characteristic. Classroom level, Mr. Lazovic stated, at the elementary level, we are using the anti-bullying specialists and slash the elementary guidance counselors to do classroom levels, programs in the classroom. Just as a follow-up, our New Jersey Child Assault Prevention Program was, well, actually began a training. Brian Hemphill from NJCAP, he conducted a workshop for the administrators, I believe it was January 9th. He met with the, all the teachers from first to third grade, and now we're working on putting together, scheduling a parent workshop. Prior to implementing NJCAP in the classroom level, teachers, parents, administrators need to be trained. NJCAP focuses on bullying prevention, focuses on child assault by an adult, it also focuses on stranger danger. And one of the things that was highlighted in the news, you know, October was prior to Sandy, was in Bergen County, there were many attempts that was reported of child abduction, so we want to make sure that we implement this program prior to the end of the school year. At the school level, there's programs that we're doing at the school level. Last week, we had a mix-it-up day at the middle school here, and we called the students called and put a little love in your heart. Initially, we, last year, we did it on Valentine's Day, but some of the middle school students were a little bit upset with me because they couldn't sit with their sweetheart last year, so we pushed it back to the end of February. At the community level, we're working right now with Mayor Petracca and the Hope Committee, helping our parents endure, putting together a program for students in the community that we'd like to highlight on 4th of July. I'm not sure if I'm really allowed to talk about it, because I know it's supposed to be something that the Hope Committee's working on right now. I've done with the anti-bullying specialists throughout the course of the school year to address different cases. We have our HIV resource page on the district website, working with the, Ms. Selly and myself, working with the elementary counselors, and Mrs. Jennings too, at the middle school here. We're implementing internet safety K to 12. We have various assembly programs, we have peer-to-peer activities. I have a group right now that's training to do a program on bullying for fourth graders, as well as an anti-smoking program for third graders. Mrs. Rubash, who is the teacher at the high school, she has a internet safety club that's working on going down to the elementary, and she has down to the elementary level already. We have different clubs throughout the district. The high school has Gay Strait Alliance and SED, doing different programs as well. HIV report was provided to the Board of Educate, to the district, I'm sorry, Department of Education in January. The statistics here were provided to the state, as well as our different prevention efforts. Part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is that our district was supposed to receive a grade this past October regarding the previous school year. We have yet to receive that grade. I'm not really sure what the holdup is, but we're still waiting to receive that grade. Once we do receive that grade, that is supposed to be posted on our district website. Each school is supposed to receive a grade, as well as the district, and we still have not received that grade yet. Once we do receive that grade, I believe, I provided a report to the Department of Education last January, I'm sorry, last July, and they're supposed to provide us with a link that parents could go and check out what our prevention efforts are. I'm still waiting for some direction from the state. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay. Hold on, yes. You broke the microphone today.
You mentioned that, you know, there was a 400% increase statewide in reporting, but you're not seeing a similar type of jump here.
My goal for next year in October is to compare the first year compared to this year, and you'll see, there was a great reduction in the number of cases that were investigated throughout the year, compared to 2011, 12, compared to this year. Would I have those numbers for you right now? I don't.
Are we going to be able to compare our numbers with other similarly situated schools to kind of see where we fall in like reporting or...
I would, I'm not sure.
I've never heard of any peer groups for bullying, which really is our numbers against the state numbers. When John and I did review it before, it does look like we're going the opposite. We have fewer cases actually being reported, unfortunately, that they get now. I don't know about the percentage, though, of cases reported versus cases confirmed, but we're still waiting for that kind of data from the state.
From the state field, it's fine, like maybe like ours, like our socioeconomic or not.
I don't know. I don't think they have plans to do it that way.
Yeah, I don't, you know, they said they were going to give me a grade in October for the weaker respect, so I'm not really sure which. I would, I think maybe, because if they're posting a lot of this with an HIV relate to the report, and then that report talks about the number of investigated cases, number of confirmed cases, and prevention efforts, but the state hasn't...
I just don't know if they're going to prove them like you're asking as far as like groups.
Oh, socioeconomic.
Or just, I don't know how to compare.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there is...
It's hard to compare this year to the last year, because I think everyone is very hypersensitive to it, so I'm like, you know, do I compare it to 2011, 12? Or do we another year? But I think it's, I think we just need to compare and look at it, just to find out where we are at as a district.
Yeah, see, I guess, how do we know if we're getting enough reports or not?
Enough reports?
Enough reports or not enough reports? And that's, I guess, to kind of compare us to a different district, that's kind of maybe the same number.
Like one of the things that Joe and Vinnie regularly is to go through the actual things that have been reported without student names, look and see if there are trends there. We can be proactive in between and try and bring our numbers down.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that I do, and because I have two young kids on Friday night, and I have nothing else going on, I check other district websites, and look at some of their reports, and I go to the board event, and there's some districts that haven't even reported zero as a district. I'm like, how is that even possible? So I think if anything, I think we're doing a pretty good job of addressing it, of addressing it, so I think we're doing, I think we're doing a good job, but yes, check other districts is definitely what we need to do, compare.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other community reports? At this time, at this time, we'll hear from citizens. Now comes the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, 601, allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and is to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all those others wishing to speak, topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personal directive, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your petition basis may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. For the first person, please step forward and tell us what you wish to say. After all the reading, somebody has to...
Definitely.
I know. If there is no comment right now, we will go to the next portion of our meeting. Resolutions, academic resolutions, Ms. Russo?
Yes, I'd like to move academic resolutions 1 through 3 as listed by Zulu.
Second.
Hold the roll call.
Mrs. Jane Chen Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mrs. Isada?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Administration Resolution, Mr. Spazada?
Yes, I'd like to move administration resolutions 1 through, 1 through, till ready.
Ms. Prozo, please.
Mrs. Jane Chen Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Coker?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Coker, the finance resolution, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions 1 through 8 as written.
Second.
Ms. Prozo, please.
Mrs. Jane Chen Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn, questions before we move on?
Sure.
On number two, I am...
On number two, Finance Resolution two, should we add language as a amount to exceed, or is this like on a as-needed basis? These are all the common as, okay, it's just adding to our earlier discussion. Yes. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Kozta?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Kazado?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Klein, Personal Resolution, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move Personal Resolution one as written.
Second.
Mr. Cook, please.
Mrs. Danjett Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Kozta?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Kazado?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the hearing of citizens. In this session, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our Regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we assure the district to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. At this time, we'd like to obtain any comments, questions. Thank you very much. Seeing none, we have any old business before the board at this time? I have something that you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just want to remind everyone, Washington School, Lincoln Schools, all of their tributaries are coming up, so, and the foundation, and some of the other things. But I wanted to remind everyone to attend and support our PTOs. I know a lot of us have been supporting the PTOs already, and just want to give this reminder. At the Spring Garden, the PTO, I had a few questions posed to me, it was a constant theme about online grading. So I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that parents seem to be concerned, that the board seems to have, they want to make sure we actually introduce something that provides for online grading. And I said, yes, well, when it's rated, we roll it out, we'll roll it out. But it was a concern of parents that it hasn't been rolled out yet, so I just wanted to convey that.
I appreciate that. We know it's a concern of the board, and I know that you've been dealing with that, and certainly been with the superintendent. Hopefully, it will be moving forward sooner than later. Any other comments from you?
I did forget to mention that Lincoln Schools Literacy Night, is it more in a, you want to make sure, get it on books and encourage everyone to attend. Sixth table.
I wanted to make something, make my board members aware of something. As you probably know, I represented Mr. Spalera the other night, and at the Planning Board Meeting, and at the Planning Board Meeting, there was some discussion about, the meeting was about the the new construction that's going on in East Center Street. And at that time, I stated, first of all, I started my comments off by stating that I thanked the Planning Board for having us there. We've always had representation to town board meetings, but sometimes our board members are not always able to make it, and we kind of let things slip by. I assured the Planning Board that this particular Board of Education is not going to let that happen. We are going to be visible and involved in what is going on in the community, because obviously, we had, in my opinion, the biggest stake in the community. And the discussion was about the, along with the construction, the discussion was about the the amount of children that might be coming into the district, into Washington School, and throughout the whole district, but mainly in Washington School. And I reiterated at that time that we, as a board, and certainly before I attended the meeting, the superintendent and I visited the school and did talk about our enrollment in the grammar schools. As everyone is aware of, all of our schools are bursting at the seams. Our grammar schools are ready to explode. And that's a concern of all of us, I know, and certainly a concern of mine. And as talking to some of our board members over the last week, we need to make sure that our town fathers are aware that this is a real concern of ours. And then in the other breath, I did say that there was a question about the amount of children that might be coming into Washington School out of this new complex being built, and there were some projected numbers, and again, they were based on a two thousand and six, I believe, this one, two thousand and six survey that was done, and certainly not accurate, I wouldn't think, but it was the only numbers that we were presented with, and they were projecting, I believe, six children coming into Washington School out of the new addition to the East Center Street complex that's going on. And my answer was, I don't think six children being spread out between kindergarten and sixth grade would have a major influence on our Washington School. And the same breath, I did say that we are, as a board, looking into the possibility of relocating our sixth grades into the middle school. We have a committee that we've hired now to do the research and see if it's possible, what's needed in the middle school, what's needed in all of our schools, actually, I believe, right? Our work is going to be covering and encompassing all of our schools and where we stand. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to clear up any miscommunications that might have been relayed. Certainly, when we get appointed to committees, whether it's the Planning Board Representative, or the Board of Adjustments, or whatever it might be, I know all of our board members communicate with the superintendent before they do attend those meetings and try to keep abreast of what's going on. And we don't want to ever do a disservice to the district or to our fellow board members by misquoting or exaggerating what the real standings are. So I just wanted to clear it up, because I understand there might have been some misunderstandings. Any other old business? Any new business?
Today, the Character Movement for Strategic Planning, they were doing our choreographing.
Well, there you go.
Review of the curriculum to see where there are elements of character of the education within the curriculum, where there's not. And I think they were a little bit surprised there wasn't a lot. So, which I don't think the committee, I thought they, I thought they were going to find more, and they thought so. So Mr. Odell reported to me this afternoon they didn't find a lot. So they're going to finish that, those findings by week's end, and then develop a plan as to how to go through the entire curriculum and start building that character component within the program. If you start talking about ideas, maybe we'll go by focus this year on K through eight or K through six for the high school, but it's going to be a huge undertaking, so he wanted me to report that.
Good. Thank you. Anything else?
I know you were over Hockey Booster Breakfast, Saturday, March twenty-third, ten a.m. at the Fiesta on Route seventy.
You know, we have a Science Fair, a Science Fair that afternoon, right?
In the morning.
In the morning, same time. Anything else? Take the motion to adjourn into the executive session. Any to, to say it? Where the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion, pursuant to JSA ten four dash twelve. Now, therefore, the Board of Education resets the closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel and student matters. If further resolved, the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reason for discussion, for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Thank you.